Five. Five fifty-nine. And then. Oh.
Here.
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 Here. The President.
To the flag, United States. To the Republic. One nation.
Is that as everybody had an op? They put some agendas or any positions or. I had one regarding master plan survey. Did it? Another. What do you know? Um, we. We have to look at. Lombardi's only request. Every night. Post. Eleven. Oh. I don't have anything else. Anybody? Have anything else about announcing they want to make a motion to approve this?
A motion to approve.
Motion by Vincent.
Support.
Or by Sokol. We get a roll call, please.
Uh, sure. Giorgio.
Yes.
Sokowicz?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes. Agenda is approved. Find the comments from the floor. Anybody who would like to come on up now is the time. Um, please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and please give your comments to a max. Buddy? Pretty quiet, bro. Simple. Nice. Nobody will move on. There's no hearings and reviews, no presentations. Um, no unfinished business. We'll move right on to item eight, A, which is under new business, Parks and Rec Commissioner and Alternative, alternate issues. Claire and Bob Billick are both here, Director and the Chair. Um. Claire sent us all a letter and kind of gave us, gave us a breakdown on what was going on back in April of twenty twenty-three. The old commission, which was myself at the time and Dan Dekowski from Washington. Um, had stepped down and the board boards had appointed a new commission. Um, at the time, which was. Made up of Janet Potany, Scott Palmer, Phyllis Zerman, City Knight, and Charles Shelton. Um. I replaced myself, um, in Washington, Janet Potany, or. Who is the Washington? That was Janet, Annie was Washington. I mean Bruce, yeah. So it was for, okay, for Bruce, it was.
Well, maybe that.
Yeah, maybe. It was me and, replacing me was Scott Palmer and Janet Potany came on as a trustee. I think Scott lived in Washington, too.
Yeah, so it was, um. I should have wrote this better. Sorry. Let me see. So it was Bob and Janet at first, and Charles Shelton was the alternate for Bruce. But then Janet moved before our first meeting ever happens, and Pam Geddard came in and took that spot. So it's been Bob and Pam since that point. And then Charles stepped down from alternate. Mike filled in for a little bit until Donna Folen was appointed. And that's where we stand right now with Bruce.
And she, you want her reappointed to Donna?
Yeah, but, um.
She was appointed March. So she's not expired. She's good. Okay, so we don't have.
So there is expiration on our alternate? Do we have expiration?
I don't know that there's an expiration there. Well. So when the first commission came on, we were supposed to kind of make up a staggered number of who's so that everybody doesn't leave at one time. But it didn't really say anything, I don't believe, about the alternate in the interlocal. It's just appointed. The alternate is the person who is a hundred percent appointed by the board, whether it be someone who applied for the position or one of yourselves or whoever you pick.
Would you have wording, um, Roxanne, that the alternate does have an expiration date and a term to just show somewhere? So then maybe we better stick with that. Said it's.
Yes, I, I checked all of you. In the minute. So it was in the minutes. When her expiration. So we just do the other two and do that one later.
All right, so anyways, the first commission actually started, original appointments around four twenty and twenty-three, so that's when the term would start. Doesn't matter if somebody had resigned and we had a new member come on. They're basically going to fill the unexpired term of the original. Um, person that was on.
Person.
Mission.
Yeah.
So, um, I'll make motion to go ahead and approve Bob Billick for a three-year term. Go from four twenty to twenty-five, this is required for three, to four twenty of twenty-eight.
Only two years. Breathes here. One to two years. It said one year and two year.
I thought we were going to two to three.
Well, I didn't know because Washington has one, two, three.
We're going to do this every year? Pretty much?
I was just basing it on the sheet that you had. It said one year length and two year term.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so I didn't make that sheet. And honestly, it could, it can go one to two. They just have to be staggered.
Right.
So whether, because Washington has three seats, they're doing one, two, and three years. So I didn't know if you could do three or two. It didn't say you couldn't.
They're doing it. We should ban it.
So you'll have one at three and one at two?
Bob would be at three years and it would be a two year.
And then Washington would have a three-year, a two-year, and a one-year. So, uh. I mean. I think it would be, well, I think.
Ten years, Bob. Well, maybe a lifetime commitment.
There's not stretch.
Okay, we'll take it. But, um. It does take a long time to get acclimated into the commission, so I, I don't know. One way or the other, we're going to lose.
Bylaws don't specify?
Two people, two people, no.
Yeah, local. Those are really. The initial. Initial. Um, after that. Staggered. Let's just go for the, what we're saying. We'll keep it up at the three years for Bob. If Washington's going to appoint a three-year commissioner. We'll follow that motion to approve Bob of twenty twenty-eight. April of twenty twenty-eight. We'll do them separately. Pay them separately. So motion to approve Bob to go, turn the extend from four twenty to twenty-five to four twenty. Twenty. Would you say April twenty-eight? Right?
Support.
For by Giorgio. I'll rewrite, I'll reread. Uh, motion to approve Bob Billick's. Continue as the chairperson, commissioner for Parks and Rec from April twenty-five to April of twenty twenty-eight. Order by Giorgio.
We make the determination that he's the chairperson?
No.
That word out?
Take chair as a commission. Um.
Washington might not like it. Would you say trustee? The trustee? Oh, it's appointed by us commission. Okay.
Um, do we have any other discussion? You want to give a roll call?
Benson?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Giorgio?
Yes.
Sokowicz?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes. Motion carries. Make a motion to go ahead and. Point Pam Gatter to continue her term from four. April of twenty twenty-five to April of twenty.
Four.
For by Giorgio. Get a roll.
Benson?
Yes.
Sokowicz?
Yes.
Giorgio?
Yes.
Craft?
Philbrook?
Yes. In regards to the alternate, are we going to do the alternate, or are we don't know if we're going to have to have a term on the alternate? But Roxanne says there is a term.
So good for another. It was just in the motion.
Okay, so then we're probably good on, or we can do her later. We appreciate her willingness to go ahead and continue, right? She said.
And we, we spoke about, we talked about it.
Okay. Right, good. All right, good. Now you got to go to Washington.
Probably. We usually do anyway.
Yeah.
In anticipation.
Um, okay, let's move on to item eight B, the auditor, auditor contract for Manor Quaterci. Asterian.
Manor Coaster. So, kind of self-explanatory, we're done, they're done with us, last contract of, as soon as this audit is over. So this would take us through twenty twenty-seven audit.
So there is, I'm, on the first page, it says, we are pleased to confirm our understanding of services that we are to provide the township for three years, ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, and March thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven.
Well, those are the fifth, three years, I think is how that works. I can ask him about that. And just in motion, make it the next three years. Works.
And then they're, you look at their, on page five, it says twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, and twenty twenty-eight.
Type of them. Because it is supposed to be the next.
So is it twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
Because we, they're already working on twenty-five right now.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're just group a long ago.
Well, obviously, we're past the March thirty-first of twenty twenty-five, so that, that's right.
Well, they still haven't done the audit.
Right, they haven't done the audit.
But, but the current contract isn't doing this. Fiscal year.
Audit. So on page five, should it say twenty twenty-five, twenty-six?
No, on page one is wrong. Twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
So with that motion, I'll make a, with that correction, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve. Asterian, Anna Asterians contract as presented. Years twenty-six, seven. Work by Giorgio. Anybody else have any discussion? Can you bring it a roll call, please?
Uh, Giorgio?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Sokowicz?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Washington. I don't know.
Yeah. Yep.
I'm to write on. Um, eight C is a nineteen ninety-five Ford Spencer Mini Pumper purchase offer on Chief Umar.
So we have a purchase offer on Mini Pumper that was donated by Ford to us probably about three years ago. Garage. Sent it out for bid. Broker. Was done a couple of deals for us in the past. He's nationwide. I believe their company is out of Wisconsin. And Joe actually did also work with us when we purchased, um, our water tender. Um, and it has also brought some great ideas to the table on what we could do with Engine Two. So there's, the purchaser is, uh, he has a deal with somebody. If you approve this, uh, the fire department out of Missouri, who was in need of very similar. Uh, this was exactly what they were looking for. They have one currently, which they lost in the, I believe, about a month or so ago in the last flood. Um, so it would be going to a good home. It is not left, from what I understand, I believe we've had it for about three years now. Um, it needs anywhere from ten to fifteen thousand dollars to get it up and running for our use if we were to use it, according to mechanic. Um, so I just feel that it would be going to a good home, um, somebody who really needs it. So the offer on the table is twenty thousand dollars.
It's good that you sent it through a broker, too. That, that's helpful. An auction book broker.
You said it was a bid out?
So he's, he's a broker, so he puts it out, no different than, believe the website that we talked about a couple of months ago. Brought up, you know, basically, they put them up there.
Okay.
Best offer.
Do you know who that went through then?
Through T Line, which is the company.
T Line's a broker?
T Line's a broker.
Oh, I mean, no, I have a little bit. I mean, it obviously was donated to us for free from Ford, which can prove in grounds. I haven't talked to anybody over at Ford. I did reach out to try to get, well, John Grant is the one to kind of handle it. But I'd like to talk to Ford's. I heard it. I mean, I'd hate to have them give, donate a vehicle to us, then we just turn around and sell it. We didn't turn around and sell it, but three years later, now after we asked him for the vehicle originally. Asked by Chief Whitkin, you know, he kept telling me, everyone get rid of it, everyone get rid of it, we'll take it, we'll take it. And here we go, turn around and sell it on. Frank and I, we took a look at it. It looks like a nice vehicle. Nineteen ninety-six, uh, five thousand miles on it. Really good shape. I know it's starting to show a little bit of signs of some rust on the frame, but it just seems like, with this stupid pumper on there, pretty much ready to go, it seems like.
So the bumper's not working on it currently, so you know.
And he says nineteen fifteen to twenty.
On the back, on the back of that pumper needs to be done. It was originally done with. All the rust on the, on the frame and also the seat. Lights need to be upgraded, so there, there is some work that needs done on it.
Has it ever been used? Are you?
Honestly, from what I understand the story, it sat at the proving grounds just as long as it's been sitting here, obviously longer, right? Um, I think, based on the mileage, they didn't use it much. Say, like, I think it has five, six thousand miles on it.
Fifty-six hundred, I think.
Yeah, something like that.
It does not have a lot of miles on it. The bad is the motor. That is one of Ford's best motors.
Is there any scenario where you think you would use it in, for our needs, or you don't really see it?
There could be, but are we?
You haven't said all.
Do we have to, are our needs going to be, you know, ten, fifteen thousand dollars to try to accommodate that need if we ever do decide to use it, right? Like, we would either turn it into a flatbed or we would turn it into a grass truck. Can't use it as a pumper. I mean, it's only three hundred gallon tank. So we, our grass truck is three fifty, so. Yeah, we could probably convert it and make some changes to, spend some money on it. My thought behind it was, um, and this was brought up by EMS, uh, we would take the funds and purchase a Lucas device, which is a CPR device.
Thought we had three already.
We have four right now, and we would get five, which means every apparatus that we have would have, would be outfitted with a Lucas device. Doesn't matter if an Alpha's coming or an engine's coming. They'll all have that Lucas device so we can perform CPR.
What's a Lucas device?
They run about thirteen to fifteen thousand. The original ones were donated, but two of the original ones out of, out of four were donated.
And one of them, the corners, you know, they're once for, first one, actually.
And I got mixed feelings about the truck. I did see it. It's a nice truck, but you can see that there is some aging to it with rust in, in the engine and. Probably wouldn't be deteriorating as fast if it was kept in a climate-controlled elements, right?
Right.
But, um, I don't know.
But if he's not using it, I, he hasn't used it. The Lucas device is something I would use often, I would think. Well.
I didn't know, I didn't know it needed fifteen, what, ten to fifteen thousand.
Needs ten to fifteen thousand dollars to get it up and running and improve and everything. Like the lines, we have to go through all the brake lines, all the, any hoses that are running through there. I mean, again, the truck's been sitting, not only here, it's been sitting at Ford. I don't think it moved at Ford probably for five years.
I'm sure it hasn't. It's only got six thousand miles. What year is that? Eighty-five?
Ninety-five.
Ninety-two, ninety-five.
Yeah, ninety-five.
I know we haven't insured for a hundred thousand. That's what our insurance company said it was worth.
Well, to buy a new one.
I, I know that that's.
Answer that.
Your thoughts, Dave?
I don't, I don't know why we would have insurance for a hundred.
Expire guy.
Yeah, I don't know why a hundred thousand would be out of line for a thirty-year-old truck.
Out of line.
You know, if the chief has done his due diligence on it, I just would, I mean, that would be my main concern. I, I respect his decision on stuff like this. If the vehicle doesn't meet his mission. Then it doesn't meet it. Mike's got a valid point that it was donated and, uh. You know, maybe we should just make sure they don't want it back, which they probably don't if they donated it. But I don't know why we couldn't go forward with that, just maybe based on satisfying Mike's, uh, concern about Ford.
I'll make a motion that we, um, proceed with selling the vehicle, um, under the conditions that Ford Motor Company will have a problem.
Support.
I was trying to Giorgio, supported by Craft. To sell the vehicle with, um, I guess with words blessing. Any other discussion?
Chief, you got any more?
Um, so what I'll do is I'll, I'll reach out to John Grant.
Oh, there, he's the one that kind of strong-armed, uh, donation in the first place, to make sure there's no, you know, bad feelings. You know, I just don't want to ruin our, we have a good reputation with them, you know.
We have a great reputation with Ford, and I, again, I have no issue with you reaching out to Ford to get their blessing.
And we're looking at possibly getting a piece of land from them, possible, too. And I hate to have them think that, well, we donate you a piece of land, what are you going to do, turn around and sell it on us? You know, that kind of, you know, I don't want, I mean, there's more involved, you know, but. know, but.
I wish we had a need for it, Mike, I, I just. I'm not seeing the vision that the past administration saw.
Yeah. No, like you said, it was, was.
And it was free, so it was.
Alright, alright, so we have a motion in a second, if we could get a roll call please.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Sakowich?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes. Right, Chief, I'll reach out to John Grant. Talked to Z, um, what was his name? John?
John, did you say Joe Graham?
Graham.
Grant.
John Graham, you said.
John Graham. I talked to John, um.
Yeah, you talked to the other John.
Never remember something today. My motion carries. Let's move on, item, to get general. Um, item eight D, which is our IT services, um, so I think that we are looking at possibly, I mean, according to our, our budget, we're, last year for our, currently, I think Rick's here from High Tech, but we were at a hundred and, I think we closed out the year at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for our IT, if I'm not mistaken, we get. Between Fire and Bruce, I think that we looked at the one time, I thought the number came up to about a hundred and sixty thousand, if I'm not mistaken. We bought, uh, on the Fire side and, because we split it.
I don't think it was half, but it was probably sixty, forty.
Right, but we're around a hundred and sixty thousand for the year.
I don't know what the total was, Mike, I know on our end it was probably somewhere around, um, forty, sixty thousand. I don't have that.
So are you thinking of putting out for Bruce again?
I don't, I mean, at a hundred and, let's say a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, that's a pretty good chunk of money, I don't know if we have much choice if we're not.
You realize we just did this a year ago?
We didn't have.
And the contract you signed, if you talked about this last month, we had others.
We have a contract, obviously, that we can honor, but we can't afford a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
It rolled over, it rolled over as of April for.
I understand.
It was automatic.
We're looking at some of the numbers and we're doing some comparisons and it just weighed.
Well, just as, if we'd talked about last month, I could have done something about it, now it's rolled over.
We haven't, we haven't approved to do anything about it. Dave, you're more of an IT guy, and I think you've done a little bit of background on this, is there any?
You know, uh, Clisto was here in January, maybe? And, uh, they offered us an evaluation of our system. I don't see a reason why we wouldn't look into it, um, to see what their cost would be. I did have some communication with Jamie, uh, just about the services that they provide, and, uh, really unless they look at our system, they're not going to be able to give us an accurate quote. I, I have a couple of different numbers, but, but they don't really mean anything without them looking at it.
Basically, looking at our.
Evaluating our system, how many computers there are, what, you know, how our, is how our system works.
I think Rick came tonight because they, their company is combined with another, so that we said in your, if anybody had any questions. I didn't, I'm, I'm not calling any, it's one, sorry.
I can come up and talk, but some of the numbers that are to be given out are not accurate, especially the hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Think that's combined between both Fire and the Township Board, you're welcome to come up to the podium, Rick. And I know we've looked at this before, and I know it was a split cost, but we were in, we were way north of a hundred thousand, I'm sure it was up, probably north of a hundred and forty thousand. We only budgeted like forty thousand, and.
Well, la- last year, you, last year you replaced your servers, so there was some cost into there. We moved from the exchange server to three sixty-five, so there was additional labor on those, so you bought discounted time blocks. But your current contract, I'm in the process of pulling that up on here, right now that I sent, uh, Susan. I want to say off the top of my head, but I will find it on here in just a second, was , um, around twenty-six thousand dollars, but I'm hoping it, this is the right one. For the whole year, okay? So monthly, I think right now you're at twenty-eight ninety-one. So if I take the twenty-eight ninety-one times twelve, thirty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-two, and that's for all your sheets.
Is that the Fire Department as well?
Yes, that's, that's for everything.
The breakdown.
So that's, that's also.
I have this sheet that I did, uh, in February for our budget stuff. Breakdown and that one invoice.
So the twenty-eight ninety-one, that's a monthly service that we pay?
Correct.
Okay.
So what I'm looking on there, you have our monitoring services, you have the backups on here, you have anti-spam, you have this threat, the backups, PAM tools, the Microsoft three sixty-five, there's, there's tons of things that are on here, it's not just managed services that we're monitoring, there's all the little extra pieces that you can add on to your. So like I said, just that contract alone is under thirty-five thousand dollars. So when you said you spent a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, I can run a report and submit that back to you.
We have a report on the invoices, if I'm not mistaken, and then we looked at them, and I think it's a hundred and fifty thousand, I don't know, we have the totals, as we plucked them out, but, um, I know that we had the whole list of services for the past year, and I'm pretty sure it comes out.
I know which one you're talking about.
What was the total at the bottom there?
So Mike, on our end, to answer your question off of our budget that ended three thirty-one, it was sixty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars that we took out of computer support and maintenance of ALS.
Sixty-two thousand.
Sixty-two, seven hundred.
I don't know if I have that one, Mike, but I ran this in February, uh, I had, uh, Dawn run me a report, uh, on invoices paid to a vendor in, in February, I don't know the exact date, we had already paid a hundred and twenty-three thousand, six seventy-six, sixty-four, uh, and that was a combination of monthly monitoring, repair service, block hours, and items purchased. I broke them down in, in those different categories. But I don't think I have the, the annual report, annual for invoices paid to a particular vendor, I don't think I have that with me.
So, on my budget for General Services, we had budgeted for the year, for this year, this past year, thirty thousand dollars. Our computer support maintenance, as of the end of the fiscal year, which was the end of March thirty-first, we had budgeted thirty thousand, we had spent seventy-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars, forty-four thousand dollars over budget. And then also assessing, we had another eight thousand dollars that was used for computer support maintenance, and there may be other departments we might have used computer support maintenance for, but just if you take the seventy-four thousand and the eight thousand, that's eighty-two thousand, you add the Fire Departments, that's a hundred and forty thousand right there alone.
Was that all through High Tech, or was that for all computers and network?
Here, our IT, I mean, there may be something we spent to Orange Cloud on it, I would have to do a breakdown, but I did see invoice. I did see a specific invoice, it was broke down for what we had paid out to Orange Cloud, I mean, to High Tech for the year, and it was in the neighborhood of a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and that was before the end of the fiscal year.
So last year, as, as, kind of like this year, there's, only thing that's slated this year is to replace the PCs, and that was because the, from Windows ten to Windows eleven, there's a bunch of your computers, I think there's like fifteen, that aren't capable of running Windows eleven, so you can either replace the computers, or you have to have computers that are upgradable, so that's what's budgeted for this year to replace. Last year, we replaced some servers, we put some switches in, um.
We had a server and a backup, it seemed like it had a really bad problem in it, we replaced, I think, our server, and then wasn't a week later, our backup went out.
Um, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that, I'd have to review the service notes to see when that actually happened.
And are we using block hours for labor to put in our server?
Yes, yes, you have discounted labor hours.
It comes with it, I mean, why are we burning up our block hours to put in a server? I mean, a server should come with.
Any new purchases are not covered under your service agreement?
If you were in my shoes and we had a hundred and forty thousand dollars that we spent on our IT services, when our budget, our revenue for our taxes is only five hundred and fifty thousand, we spent twenty-five thousand, uh, twenty-five percent of our revenue on our IT services, we need to look at what we got going on here to make sure that, that the people that we work for, that we represent are not being taken advantage of. No offense against you, I'm just saying maybe there's a possibility that things were all done right, but if we're not doing our jobs, when we have a number that's obviously two hundred percent over budget, or three hundred percent over budget, there's, there's some kind of an issue.
Well, I, and I understand that, and like I said, if I had all the paperwork here, which I can provide for you for your next board meeting, before that, that has, so that you can review everything, I don't know if those numbers are right. It seems, they seem very high, that I don't think we did that much, but like I said, I can pull all that up and actually see them. I, I don't have access to your wifi right now, because I was trying to get into it. I could review all those numbers, but I know for like your contract, that's only thirty-six thousand dollars, so if you don't buy any equipment from us, that's, that's what your support service is. You have time blocks left with us, so any new projects, so like if we replace these fifteen computers that I sent to Susan, that, that's up for replacement, labor would come all off that time block, so there wouldn't be any additional fees, it's just whatever the new server, or new PCs cost. But last year, we did major upgrades to your network, and that was because the servers had to replace, we moved the exchange, so there was a lot of work that was done going to Microsoft three sixty-five, so you have a lot of expenses that were done that way that normally wouldn't happen.
Now we have till October to.
Yeah, you have it till October fifteenth, your computers will still keep working, what it is, is there's a, a piece on the actual processor, a security chip on there that the Microsoft Windows eleven writes to, and if it doesn't have that on there, even though you can force it to take Windows eleven, it's not loading the security update, therefore you don't have a true Windows eleven. So we ran a scan of your network, there was no charge or anything that was part of our services that we do under managed services, to say which computers, I gave a report back to Susan and said, these ones either already have eleven, these are the ones that have ten but can upgrade to eleven for free, there's just labor time to, to do the upgrade, and these are the ones that will not take the security update and you have to replace. So last year, when we told everybody that this had to be done, because this has gone on for about fifteen months, that we said the five-year warranty's up, Susan mentioned to me, well, the PCs are running fine, it's not an issue with the PCs running fine, it's with the issue with having the security update. So all your computer, well, not all your computers, but about fifteen of them probably don't have the warranty on them, and so there's no warranty, if anytime you call on us and ask us to do something, if we have to replace a computer, you're going to replace it anyway, and that's what we did, I think last year, there was one or two that, that went away, and when they had an issue with them, we just replaced them.
So we need to have, you're saying we need to replace fifteen out of twenty of them because it won't be, it won't have the software, it wants Windows.
Yeah, I think it's fifteen out of like twenty-four or twenty-six computers, so I know the Fire Department replaced a bunch of theirs, so there might be some that fall off that list if it's, if they're still on there.
Well, we're looking at what we paid last month in check voucher, under check vouchers, we paid thirty-two hundred dollars to High Tech just last month, you know what that was for?
No, do, do you have your wifi and I can get into and see if I can see anything?
I don't, I just have what. We paid out to High Tech.
Yeah, I can't see any of the invoices, but I can't get into any of the things that we actually billed you for.
So already, I mean, if we have the same, similar budget, let's say our budget's at forty thousand, basically, we do what you got here on this sheet, we're gonna, and plus at a rate of three thousand dollars a month for whatever services, we're gonna be way over budget at this time again next year.
Well, I'm seeing about thirty-five thousand dollars right now in support, and then whatever the computers were going to cost you, which I think were around a thousand dollars to give you a five-year warranty.
That's fifteen thousand, right there for fifteen computer.
Yep. So yeah, just with that, you'd be about fifty thousand dollars, so there'd be no additional labor, because you already have prepaid time blocks that could be used for it.
Rick, do you know how many, what hours we have left?
Not, not off the top of my head, but lots.
Yeah, because we just purchased two, correct? One for the.
Correct. You got them at the end of last year.
Thousand right there, roughly.
Yeah, what we did last year is you saved a couple extra, probably twenty to forty dollars off the normal rate per hour to buy those, so you bought one in November and you bought one in December, and I changed the price to the December rate for your November, December. So you have lots of hours right now that I'm aware of. So labor's not an issue with, you need something from us. It's, the computers have to be done, we just did the server, so you're usually running a five-year cycle on everything, your servers were last year, but not only did we do the servers last year, we moved you all over to the three sixty-five product, where you didn't have three sixty-five before, so now all your stuff is in cloud. So last year was a lot more than you would normally spend. If you were to do this in five years from now, you already have it all set up, you would just be replacing the hardware. So labor costs would be a lot less, because everything's already running.
Everything's going up in price too, so.
Yes, I sent some to Susan, like on the computers, um, you need to replace fifteen, I currently have twelve in the office, they've been held right now for Bruce Township until tomorrow. I explained to her that the costs are going up about two, three hundred dollars just with all the tariffs. It's nothing we can control and do. So right now, they're being held for you, I'm still short three. I did talk with one of my customers, I may have one that's not going out to one of my customers tomorrow, so I may be able to get you thirteen still at that cost. Like I said, you have a need for fifteen, you can wait till October, I don't see the pricing going down, the price is only going up.
How much because of the tariffs?
Well, China got slapped with ten percent, then it was twenty percent, and it, and it's going up, but cost-wise, it's affecting everybody. So the Windows eleven thing right now, it's, it's not a Michigan thing, it's not a US thing, it's a worldwide thing, everybody has to upgrade, so everybody's buying computers this year. So you can buy now, you can buy later, if you would have talked to me back in February, March, prices were stable, they're not stable anymore.
What is the cost of the ones that are put aside for Bruce, did you say?
Um, I think they're right around a thousand dollars.
It was seven ninety-five, but then you said just.
Yeah, it was seven ninety-five plus, I want to say one sixty or one sixty-five, so if I take the seven ninety-five plus one sixty, whoops, sorry, seven ninety-five plus one sixty-five, I think you guys are going to pay like nine sixty, so it's under a thousand dollars.
So you have enough computers for Bruce Township to decide?
No.
Oh.
You need fifteen, I have twelve, I might be able to get you thirteen. We just ordered twenty-five more that are slightly a little bit more, it's a totally different model, using an older processor, but it has Windows eleven, it's same specs.
Okay, so those twelve, we would get.
Yeah, guaranteed they're, they're held for you right now.
Yeah.
I didn't know what the conversation was tonight, so I, he told me he had those, I said, can you just hold on until we talk about it?
Do you have a list of who those computers would be going to, Susan? Can you pass that down?
I think it's everybody, isn't it?
Everybody, so, yeah, it's a lot of, I mean, if you need that money.
Yeah, you gotta have like twenty-four, twenty-six computers that we, that we seen, and there's like fifteen, so some of them can take an upgrade, some already are, are already running Windows eleven, these are the ones that just can't take the upgrade, so.
Are any of them running eleven right now? Is eleven out? I don't, I don't.
You have, you have the list, I'd have to, like I said, look for it here on my.
But there are some that are running eleven.
I believe so. Yeah, the list highlights everybody.
I'm trying to open it on my side. So on my list.
I see two for the Fire Station. Station two. E T F D is the user, and then there's one that says Station two.
Yeah, so on, on the station computers, there's at least a couple of them that we might be able to just let go.
All the rest of them for the, um, office, looks like everyone that misses that, everyone, yeah.
What's that, or I know it was five in, in the Fire Department.
Yeah. And I think you budgeted, what, thirty thousand, Mike, is that what we have in the budget this year?
Might have been recent, might be forty, but last year was thirty thousand.
I mean, I'm looking at what's here, it says thirty, so I don't know.
It's not thirty.
Mm-hmm, for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, thirty. Under General Services, Computer Support Maintenance.
So just shooting from the hip to do fifteen computers with labor and computer prices, looking around twenty-five thousand?
No, you're.
Black hours would be the labor, correct?
So you're nine sixty, if you did all fifteen, you're at fourteen thousand, four hundred.
What about then, uh?
Labor, you already have time blocks, so the time blocks, so just deduct from your time blocks. So because you already prepaid for them last year.
What do you charge per computer?
Uh, one seventy, but your labor rate, I think, drops you down to one fifty.
One hour.
Typically, we do two to four hours.
Two to four hours per computer?
Yep, depends on what your computer is, how slow the old one is. Cooperation, all, everything else, trying to get in to be able to schedule everything and getting done.
So roughly sixty hours to replace fifteen computers on the I M.
Yep, they're between thirty and sixty hours. We know it's gonna take at least thirty hours, we know it won't go over sixty.
And the last block we bought, I believe it was a hundred?
Yes.
That was how much for a hundred?
You have two.
Well, the fire department has one.
Yes.
And then.
Yeah, I'm just saying, there's two hundred hours, but a hundred is yes, yours.
So we'd be using up like sixty hours.
You may have a little bit more than that, because I believe there's a third block floating around.
It's little, but yes.
So you would use sixty percent of that. How much was a hundred block, how much is a hundred block hours? I believe, well, I think.
You paid.
I think they're eleven thousand a piece.
It was thirteen five.
Thirteen five, yes, and, and normally they're fourteen five.
Well, we paid fourteen five for the first block and twelve five for the second block.
Yeah, so you average thirteen five. If you were to buy a new one now, it's fourteen five at current rates.
We're gonna be probably twenty thousand to replace the computers. No, because you're using, you've already spent for that block.
Right, you've already spent that money.
You're fifteen. We're gonna have to replace those block hours, burn through block hours.
We shouldn't need that many block hours because they're not replacing a server or anything like that this year. But I mean, I don't know how many, you go through just typical computer issues throughout the year, I guess I know all that.
The minor computer issues that we have to deal with, let's say it's emails that are the other thing, is that part of?
It's all covered.
The service agreement.
Correct.
So the thirty six thousand a year that the township's got?
Unlimited service calls.
Okay.
Doesn't cover new equipment, so that's why you got hit last year.
Right, but all of that is included?
Yes.
So Mike, you shouldn't. We shouldn't occur anymore, we should.
Yeah, so with the new server and whatever else you put in there a couple of days later, and then all of us get a new computers. What are the chances of us needing more block hours?
Almost zero.
Okay.
Because we, we, we recommend replacing a server every five years and your PC every five years. We didn't replace the PCs last year, we just replaced the servers last year. We also replaced them early last year, because we replaced them, I think, March, April, is when we came with the servers. Or a whole year later, that we were supposed to replace some PCs, because we talked about spreading it out over the years. Do you want to do four or five of the PCs that you have to do? How do you want to do this? If you also look at that sheet, I think there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven computers that can upgrade to Windows eleven. That takes about an hour for us. Like, but like I said, you have block hours, there's no additional purchases, there's no nothing else. And you'll be on Windows eleven, so those can be done at any time you have the hours approved to do it. The other ones, like I said, the PCs, you have to approve the PCs, or they're gonna get it released. So last week when I was talking with Susan, we had twenty, went down to seventeen, went down to twelve. The twelve got actually sold to another county. The county upgraded because they wanted a particular model with certain specs, released those twelve back to us and got twelve different ones. So then I called her as soon as I got off the phone with them and said, they're back on the block, what, what would you like to do? She asked me if I could hold them to the board meeting, so that's what I did.
So we need to do all the red letter.
Yeah, less, some of them are at the fire department and the chief's already replaced them, so he can look at that list.
I don't know if I, I haven't looked at the list, but we may have replaced some. And there are a couple that we just no longer use. There's no need, and now with additional iPads. Bruce can use the iPads.
Yeah, because on this list, I'm seeing three that are at, says station two, that are slated for replacement. So if he, if you don't need them, you're, you match up perfectly with what I have, twelve.
You recommend the fifteen.
Fifteen is what I show, but if they've already been replaced. So like my customer that I talked to yesterday is, they just ordered seven. Now they want to get a different one, you can return one if you're not using it.
I believe Rick's saying three for the fire department, so technically, twelve for the township.
Yes, if they've been replaced. So I would just look at the list and confirm.
I have a problem replacing some, but I have a problem with a hundred and forty thousand dollars here. What's that? I'm sorry, but that's like.
How long is this taking?
I don't know if we just, I don't understand what you're saying, what you're saying. Well, that's what Dave's kind of doing, pointing me, Dave, I don't know why we can do that.
You shouldn't need any more, but.
I'm looking at what we spent, and here we are right out of the game, we're gonna burn our budget up in the first month.
But I see what you're saying, like our first, I mean, we just wrote a check for three thousand two hundred and four dollars. Our monthly should already be twenty eight.
Is that for monthly services?
Well, our monthly service is twenty eight ninety one, right? Times twelve, but this last check run, we paid High Tech three, three thousand two oh four. Not sure what the, why was additional?
I would have to see what's on the invoices.
I haven't seen the invoice, I don't know if you have it handy.
That could be something that you did up at station two? Because we shouldn't be paying any additional, we haven't, we haven't purchased anything, correct?
Not that I'm aware of.
I guess we want to just look at that bill, Susan, and kind of get an idea of why it's more.
Yeah, but that's.
That's what I, I tried to do.
The only work we would have did is moving over the old ones to the new ones under the support. Um, so that would be considered like buying a new one, upgrading it, so there would be a bill for that. But once it's switched over, then everything falls back under the support agreement again.
Susan's wanting to get the bill, just so we can kind of see it.
Point, I mean, if we're paying, let's say twenty eight hundred, why did we kind of check for thirty three?
Right, if everything's covered.
We purchased something for, let's say, five hundred dollars. Because we already have block hours, which should be going towards that.
Yeah.
Right, because our block hours do not go towards our service fee.
A hundred percent. I mean, they, they could have misbilled and said something where they billed you straight time and it should have came off a time block.
Sure.
Because they might have looked and said, oh, the fire department doesn't have one, even though you do.
Sure.
But like I said, without seeing the invoices, I can't tell you what the five hundred dollars, the five hundred dollars also could have came something from that was three months ago and they finally closed it out.
And Dave, does it break it down when you looked at it, block hours are on there?
Yeah, I have the, uh, well, yeah, on this that I put together, and I built that off of this report I got from Dawn. You know, for all the money that was spent, but this was only through January twenty ninth. So I don't have anything that came beyond that, and that's what this, this spreadsheet was built off of.
What was the total as of January twenty ninth?
One twenty three, six seventy six. So we still had all of February and March to go. I think I already had February's invoice, I don't know whether it had been paid, but it's on my list.
Do you have a breakdown, something you have a review you wanted to share with us, or what are your thoughts, Dave?
Well, as I started, we, we've had this offer to have someone review our, you know, our system to evaluate it, to maybe provide different pricing. I'm certainly not happy with the money that was spent, most of it's spent before I came here. You know, to me, a lot of this stuff seems very, very out of line. But we won't know unless we have somebody else evaluate it. And I can just base it, I mean, I can tell you based on my personal experience with calling for service. That I didn't find them responsive at all. It took two months to get Lisa Cross's FOIA information to me. Uh, I called three times to get information on particular invoices, left messages, never got a call back. So from my perspective, that's not somebody that I care to deal with.
You might want to hear this, you could have talked over there.
Well, I had another conversation with Rick, and Rick did answer some of my questions, but that doesn't solve the problem. You know, I should be able to call and get the information very readily.
What information were you looking for?
Oh, you and I had this conversation back probably in March.
Okay.
I had relayed to you that I had called about the FOIA request. It took me two months to get the FOIA information in a format that I couldn't use. Uh, I left three messages with Aaron on invoice questions specifically, and never got a call back until I spoke with you. Now, I don't find that acceptable service. If there's a billing person and I call that person, I should get a response. And I don't, yeah, I, I'm not anybody special, we're just a customer. And, and I should have had a call back in a day at the outside, but it went, lasted over a month before I called you. I, I just find that unacceptable.
And I totally agree with all that, but when you call B, you've got a call back that same day, correct?
Right, but that's not the answer to the question.
Well, I'm the account manager, so I'm the one ultimate responsible for all the stuff. I'm aware of the issue with not getting a call back from the accounts payable, receivables on that side of it. Usually what I ask my customers is copy me and anything like that, if you're having any kind of delays. Susan's our main contact, I don't know if they didn't notice when I asked them about it, they were aware of it. They told me that they're waiting for something from service. When I asked service about it, they said there was multiple requests on the same FOIA thing, but they weren't able to. If I remember this correctly, not be able to get you the information that you want, because there either wasn't information, they answered it the first time. But then I think a second or a third request came in for the stuff again. But like I said, I'm not part of that piece of it. I'm responsible, but I'm not, I can't answer what they did and didn't do and how it actually stepped through without reviewing their notes.
What did you see on the invoice, Susan?
Do you want to explain? One of the travel charge to do some, I mean, some onsite engine, a system engineer, a hundred and sixty eight. Uh, remote services, and then a travel fee, remote thirty three dollars and the travel fee was sixty. So that was a sixty two dollar addition to the normal.
But down below that, it looked like there was like an hour and a half credit, it looks like it came back off the time block. So why they charged two different things, like I said, I'd have to ask them. It could be a error that they put, they selected the wrong billing thing, that it should have all came off the time block. Like I said, I would have to review that individual invoice to figure out where the issue is.
Remaining balance is twenty six thousand, almost twenty seven thousand dollars.
That's what we have balance and block hours, you see?
How much time is remaining on our contract?
Approximately about two hundred hours.
Block hours?
Block hours.
Block hours, but what about our contract?
Contract doesn't have hours, it's just a month to month, it doesn't have any hours that are assigned to it. It's unlimited hours. It's unlimited technicians, so you're not assigned a single technician. You have the whole team available.
You're talking about our contract with them?
Yes.
We, we just rolled over April first for a year.
For a year, okay, that's, right, thank you.
Yeah, the contract goes from March first to the thirty fir, or April first to March thirty first of next year.
What is our monthly service charge, charges or maintenance charge?
Two thousand eight ninety one.
Yes.
Eight ninety one.
Our bill was thirty two hundred dollars this month, so there's something out thirty two hundred. Give or take twelve hundred bucks difference. We don't have no twelve hundred dollar invoice.
Yeah.
Were they supposed to take their charge off the block hours and they billed us?
I don't know, because I can't see the full detail on that. So normally what I would see is I'd see the invoice, I'd see that documentation, and then I would see the service call, actual ticket, telling me what they did. So though on there, they can say where it's free, billed to time, billed full time. I don't know if they selected something wrong, but I did see on that sheet where there was probably two and a half, three quarter, two and three quarters hours. But I do see below on that same sheet where it said one point five hours minus off the time block.
Why would they typically come onsite?
They only come onsite if there's something that they can't fix remotely.
Right, so did we purchase something? Again, is this, I'm thinking maybe this was might have been for the fire department?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. Like I said, I don't know what the dates, I don't have the forms in front of me right now. What I can do is I can get all those things answered for you. I can run everything from last year, I can run everything from this year, what, what they.
We have a copy of the ticket, it is fire department related.
I'm assuming it was to put the switch in.
Okay.
Up at station two. That would be, and that would be the only reason they're gonna come out here.
That'd be new hardware.
Replacing or new hardware.
I know like when Pat and I came out here, there was no bill for you for that. When we did the initial survey of looking what was going on out there.
I'm gonna make a motion that we proceed with replacing the computers that we need replaced in the township.
I got a question, I don't know, I haven't, I saw a person, I haven't heard of anything of a big meltdown on these computers, and how long did you say?
Well, he said it just has to do with being able to receive the upgrade.
And security issues for, come October.
We've been having issues when our printer, our printer beeps, and then all of a sudden our characters on our computers will change. Bob and I have been having that lately. Now today, I don't know, I'm gonna call B S and A in the morning, but gonna process like fifteen payments that came in like this afternoon, try processing.
Is that a computer issue you're thinking, or?
Yeah, well, I go to, I go through everything I'm supposed to go, and then it comes up saying there's an error. I don't know if it's B S and A or I, or I thought.
So something on that, you can call us, because that's free, that's part of your services that we provide.
Yeah, just, this beeping with the printer started a few days ago. Now today we have this issue.
You said the computer's beeping?
Our printer will beep.
Okay.
And then the characters on our, on our computer screen will change.
But that's, you think is because the computers needs to be replaced?
I don't know, I'm not, I'm not that techy, you know, you can get by.
All three of his are on this list.
I get it, but I mean. That broke, don't fix it, I mean, how do you know, so we replace all the computers and it still has that problem?
Yeah, but we still have a year to go with their contract.
And we have, by October, we have to make this.
You guys, I mean, I know I talk to people in my community that, hey, how much for your IT services? And they, they're floored, we're paying in excess of a hundred and twenty five.
We have to use up these hours, so.
I think some of it was the replacement of the server. I don't know what that charge was last year, or, you know, and then moving over to three sixty five, that sounds like that was.
The biggest expense.
And we're going right off the bat, right into computers and software. You know, I mean, I'm only one member on the board, but I've been that, I'm feeling the love for some.
So you're saying with our monthly charge, we're at about thirty thousand, right? Thirty six, thirty six thousand. And then if we replace our computers, that's probably another fifteen thousand.
Oh, yes.
So then we're at.
Yeah, right over here.
We're at fifty.
Well, you can look at it this way, it's the fifteen thousand dollars, it's for those fifteen computers, that's for the next five years. So that's a one time, you're good for another five years. You have parts, labor, onsite warranty on this. It's not, it's a HP warranty, so you can have High Tech come, you can have HP come, you can have anybody else that's HP certified. Come out and replace all this stuff for free, so you're not locked into High Tech, it's just, it's getting you upgraded. I have a, a report on here that shows all your computers are basically about six years old, that you got them in like January, February of twenty nineteen. So they were due to replace last February. We're in April.
So my question is, is with our annual fee, monthly fee that comes up to thirty six, fifteen thousand to replace all the computers. You don't foresee us going, spending any more in the next, within the next year, providing nothing else goes wrong?
Yes, I, I have nothing slated on here. The only thing that we had mentioned to Susan last year was, it's, you've had your current switches seven years. And that it's time to look to do it. It's not, hey, you have to do it, hey, we can't get updates, there's, there's no reason except for, they're seven years old. This is when they're normally replaced, don't have to, this is when they're normally replaced. So that'd be the only other thing that we would look and talk to you about this year. There's nothing else.
I mean, the reason for my motion is that my fear is that we'll be paying. I mean, the reason for my motion is that my fear is that we'll be paying, you know, 50 to 100% more for our computers with all this terrible stuff that's going on, that's, that's my concern.
A portion of that 34 is paid by the fire department, correct? 40% or small portion.
Only if it's his computers.
Only because it's, so very small.
Right.
I mean, we've only budgeted 30,000.
Well, you said you didn't need any, so it's.
You're talking about the maintenance?
No, yeah, I guess I'm just talking in general, let our general, the, the general offices, we've only put 30,000 in there and you're going to spend 34 just on.
Computer support, maintenance and other departments, it's theirs budget, but I mean, it's not going to.
Not much.
No, we're, we're going to keep up at 125,000 plus a year, you know, I know that we had other things, but, you know.
It, it's not going to be $125,000 this year. If we just take the contract plus the PCs, we're maybe at 50 at the most. I'm just using.
Maybe prior to the server going down and the backup going down last year, if you would have said prior to knowing anything like that, you would say there's no way we're going to spend $100,000, there's no way it's going to be 80,000.
I can't answer why the server went down. I, I, last time I remember the server going down, there was something wrong with generator here and that caused an issue with the battery and everything.
So I, I, I do recall something like that a couple of years ago, it was in the winter time and we did have a backup and I know it did cost us a lot of money to have you guys come out, I don't know at that point what you did to the server, to the battery backup, but it seems like we either had the server.
Backup, I believe was replaced.
Yeah, I think we just replaced the battery.
The server was replaced because it affected the fire department and I.
So here we are, replaced the server twice?
No.
No.
The Soffos is the server, correct?
No.
And that's a switch?
That's the firewall.
That's the firewall. What's, so what's the server over there? Which one is it?
It's the big square box, says HBE on it. That's your main box in there.
I think, Mike, that was replaced at that time. And the switches are here.
Are all the switches there or are they?
There's multiple switches.
Two years ago, you're saying?
It would have been not this winter, last winter.
Yeah. But if we had a, you're saying the server was replaced there?
I believe the server, the backup, so the backup, you're talking is the battery pack system.
It was down, we got, right, but that's what we replaced two years ago. It just recently replaced it again.
We, I don't believe we replaced, Rick, we replaced the server this year?
Last year.
Last year.
Last April, I want to say March or April that replaced it, that's when we did all the major upgrades. That was the biggest expenses that you had is because we were moving platforms from having everything stored here to now it's in the cloud.
Okay, to the history. I think it was limped along because then we had issues with how it was plugged in, was it plugged into the generator for some reason, and it was prior to that.
Who's fault is that though?
That's whoever was servicing in and out of there and multiple people coming in and out of that room. Could have been high tech, it could have been orange cloud, it could have been, or came in and rearranged things.
I know we got a motion, we're not supposed to discuss, but Dave, do you have any recommend? I mean, what do you, I mean, he's more of an IT guy and.
Well, again, I, I would like to have the evaluation done. I'm looking at, we, we won't know anything unless we have an evaluation done. I'm looking at this material that we were given and when you pay for, with this service, when you, you have their service, it can, it includes unlimited onsite and remote support for computers. So here we're paying a monthly fee and we're paying for, for the service. Now, I don't understand why we, if we're paying for a monthly service fee, why would we pay when they have to either log in or travel to the township to fix it? But we're not going to know anything unless we actually have an evaluation done. We're not going to be able to compare and I could say we're not going to know anything. But, and more for the comparison and I don't like, they're only on hold till tomorrow. That doesn't work for me. So they basically, if you don't decide anything tonight, you know, that's going to cost you. So I'm not a fan of that.
I'd say I'm not either. Understand the whole tariff issue we got going on, but.
That Calisto company to me, I don't know if you know anything about them, but they seem so new to me, they don't have.
Well, we didn't, we haven't evaluated them, so how can you say they seem so new?
Well, then they don't represent any municipalities.
They were in Centerline for a while.
City of Centerline? We didn't ask them for any references. They included a letter from the city of Centerline, as they do. I, I assumed they represent other people as well, but we didn't ask them, so we, it's hard to compare unless we compare.
Too bad we didn't do that while they were here.
So I can address a couple of things. If the paperwork you're looking at that has like our unlimited service calls is telling you everything that you have in the package from us, we have three packages. We have a basic, a professional plan and a premium plan. You run the professional plan, which is unlimited service calls. The premium plan is the exact same thing, but includes all onsite service work. Means the monthly premium goes up, but you don't pay additional for us to come onsite. You have, every time we come onsite, you have to pay for it. We tell most of our customers to buy the professional plan because we don't usually have to come onsite that much. You guys are relatively close for us. You have time blocks that you can purchase for projects and use for whatever you want, so that's what we're doing. I pulled up last year's numbers to see what you spent on the 365. It was $12,943, so just under 13,000. And when we did the upgrade to the server, the server was just over 38,000. It was 38,067 and 38 cents. So that's a five year thing. That's with your time block, that's everything that's, that was on there to do all this. So, and so the 365 had all that time on there. So those were just for those projects. Those are usually one-time installations where you then don't have to do it again specifically on the servers.
So what other major projects were there? That's 51,000, if you add the 36,000 to that, that's 87,000.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you, you have 51 plus the contract that was under, was like 35.
Right.
So I'm at, that's what I said, when you said that you spent 160,000 dollars with us, I was like.
We've spent above and beyond that, I guess, and that's why I'm asking, were there other major projects that we did that we were billed?
None, none that I'm aware of, that's why I asked if it was other companies that had it in there. I'm going to have a hard time getting to 160.
Dave's got invoices that show.
123,600.
123,000.
Yeah, but originally you told me 160, so.
Well, this isn't the whole year.
Pardon?
This is missing two months. This ended January 31st, is the only bills I had through.
Okay. So you're telling me that was from last January to this January?
No, that was only up until January, April 1st to January 31st.
Okay.
We spent 120, so none of the bills that came in February or March are in this total.
So it's another $36,000 up, up till February 1st on top of the 87,000 that you've already accounted for. So what other projects did we do?
That's what I'm saying, there was.
That we spent 37,000 on?
We didn't do your internet, that's through orange cloud, we didn't touch your phones, we haven't touched your cameras, we didn't do door access, there's, there is no other projects.
Well.
Is that just?
That's what I'm saying, I'm trying to figure out where.
This is just high tech, yeah.
I mean, that's just your bill, so are we not getting charged the block hours, are we getting charged? Is, is it a billing issue? It's.
I don't know because I don't have the paperwork in front of me, so I'll have to pull it and review it.
So this does include our block hours. So if we still have 27,000 in block hours left, then this would be around 100,000. So we paid 1,200 for a hard drive replacement, there's not a computer in this building that's worth 1,200.
That was for the server and those are specific for tho, those machines that go into that server.
That was this, you, you're aware of that in June that it was a server hard drive?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, so then we paid in June 1,200 for a hard drive and then we had to buy a whole new server in December. So that was a new hard drive that was in there? I mean, tho, those hard drives that you charge us 650 for a hard drive, how could it cost 1,200 for the replacement?
That's, that was probably for two hard drives, I believe we replaced two hard drives in there. So if you're telling me there were 650 each and it's for a server and it's for an older server? Yes.
You guys know my thoughts.
And we, and we had to do that because a couple failed, they needed them right away. So when you're doing old technology and you're trying to get it, they're not just, everybody doesn't have them laying around, I have to get them where I can get them from.
Please, Frank, you have a motion.
I think I'm going to retract my motion after hearing Dave's, Dave's report there.
Want to make a motion? Anything you want to offer?
No, if I was going to make a motion, it would just be that we conduct this evaluation that costs us nothing to see at least we could have a comparable.
What about that?
I make a motion that we have Calisto do just an evaluation of our system, a complimentary evaluation of the system.
I have a second motion. What do you have, any other discussion?
Remember, we went through this a year ago, the whole process.
We went through the bidding process.
Yeah.
That was before we got a bill for 100, or 140,000. If you're fine with paying 140,000, then you let the people know, I'll, I'll let you talk to them.
What was the pricing the year before?
Well, I didn't, I don't have that in front of me, but I was going to say that was probably more in line, but here we are off the bat, we're already with the new computers going to be over budget for this year and we haven't even gotten to the year for one month.
It's 15,000 to buy the computers. That's if you buy all 15.
We just got in place for 3,000, you know, 15,000, that doesn't include everything, plus if you have to buy block, block hours that were going to be used, and I mean, yeah, we can look at the very bottom line, it's like what the computers cost, but there's a lot of things you seem to be rolling over on.
The monthly billing is different than the computers, you can't lump everything together.
Bottom line is that we have from up until January, 10 months there, it's 125,000. I don't think that the people in this community can even grasp what 125,000 IT services when we only bring in 550,000 in revenue for real property taxes. That's 25% of the revenue we bring in for taxes.
The 125 wasn't really in IT services, some of it was brand new equipment and upgrades and things that you needed, same thing we're talking about the PCs today is, this is not, we've told you about this 15 months ago, I talk with Susan every three or four months about this is coming, this is coming, this is what you need to do it. You have till October, you can roll the dice, you can try to get pricing from somebody else and see what their cost is. I've held these basically since the beginning of April for you.
We appreciate you. I mean, I appreciate, I do reach out, you guys are good to me, I've got no problem, but I mean, at the rate that we're paying, we should have our boards, like, I don't know, like, I, Dave's got a motion to have Clisso do an evaluation, I've got a second. There's no other discussion, can we get a roll call please? You still have a contract with us, you know?
I see.
To Giorgio?
Yes.
Sokowicz?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
No.
Philbrook?
Yes. Motion carries will get a free evaluation from Clisso. Rick, appreciate taking time out of your day to come and explain.
No problem, anytime that you need me to come out, I will get the list of what all those numbers were from last year to this year to see where everything's tracked down and we'll see what comes out from it then. Yep, thank you.
Move on item 80, which is our limestone stone cost share. Every year we have three miles of limestone that we are allocated from the McComb County, we do a cost share with them. Um, this year's cost for limestone is 33,450 for Bruce.
3375.
3375.
Yeah, 3375.
Which is down, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. With the brim, it's 333, 375, right?
We definitely got to go with the brim, we've got to do a treatment, I would say with the brim. Even it's $300.
It's the last column.
Big difference, locking it down.
Can you tell me why all the different communities pay a different price for the same product?
Um, it's distance from the.
From the yard?
Okay.
Well, not from the yard, but from, they got to get that, they go limestone.
Okay.
So it's distance in mind.
It's a distance, okay.
I made a motion to go to prove our limestone program for 2025 for 33, 375 for Bruce Township.
Support.
For by Giorgio. Um, if we have no other discussion, I can tell you that I'm looking at obviously our northwest corner of the township, we got Wales, McKay and Fisher, they're all natural beauty roads. People up there are just having a really hard time, it's really muddy, they're having, in the springtime it was, we had ruts and they were getting stuck and trying to get some limestone up there. I just sent in a request to do Wales Road and they denied it again because it's a natural beauty road, they need 40 feet to raise the dump of the truck up, they won't come down there and trim the trees because it's a natural beauty road. I know you guys all know Danielle Underwood lives on Wales Road, she's one of the people that I let know that I'm trying to get limestone here, so I don't have anything locked in. They did approve some Scotch settlement work that needed to be done, but still trying.
So that's for three miles, right?
Well, there's different, I was, Scott settlement, Brown Road and McKay Road, pardon McKay Road was part of it, and Wales Road would have been a half a mile. They denied Wales Road and they won't take it. They're going to bring, they keep saying every year that they're going to bring individual smaller trucks out there, they put very little. I don't know if anybody's ever been up there in the springtime or when it's raining out, it's like you're driving down a farm field, two trucks.
But the proposal is for the three miles, you're going to try and get three miles for Bruce Township or?
We get three miles, it's just a matter of getting it approved.
Okay.
Okay, roll call.
Chris?
Yes.
To Giorgio?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Sokowicz?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Motion carries move on item 8F, which is our utility billing update. I, Tuesday, you put that in there.
Yeah, I just, we've been working on this, I, are you wanting to be part of some of this conversation because you were scheduled for that one meeting, but remember the?
I don't recall.
Oh, okay. Um, we're in the process, we've been in the process of this for almost, I think, over two years. It has not been changed, so we shouldn't be changing things up without actually going through this process, it has to come to board, it has to be passed by board and then the utility, the, yeah, utility billing and all the other things that we change within the ordinance will go into effect. So hopefully by next month I'll have something for you.
No, I just was, I didn't really get a chance to look at your guys' stuff, but I did see right off the bat that you had down here that you wanted to remove the multifamily dwellings because we don't allow apartments, which is untrue because Eric Owen is considered basically technically. So you got, that's wrong, I've taken it off.
That's multifamily, isn't it, sir?
This is.
That was Amy and Roxanne and I sat down with that and Roxanne does the billing now, so it was kind of.
I'll look at it, I mean, just, I'll look at it, I know, I'm just saying we can't because we do have.
Well, it's my department, so, you know.
Did you give us anything on that or?
No, I didn't, I was just giving.
Okay, I was going to say, I'm not following, but go ahead.
And I think, I'm not mistaken, is it multifamily? Doesn't that include condos?
And I think, I'm not mistaken, isn't multifamily, doesn't that include condos?
No.
It's the same thing they got for you in a seven one building.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll look at it. I'll get back with you. All right, yeah, well, hopefully we'll get something soon.
Yes, I, we will have something hopefully by next month.
That's just an update, there's no answer.
Except we.
Eight H is our ordinance code book.
No, we got G.
No, BSNA.
G.
Yeah, G, so. Yeah, BSNA payments. So we've been currently using iCloud for payments with credit cards and ACH. And we've been having problems where people's accounts have been conveyance. If you change one little thing, it knocks them out from paying their bill and then they get a late charge and all that other stuff. Also, this is real time, so if anybody makes a payment, it'll go directly, the information will go directly to our BSNA system, which means our billing department, our utility billing will have an up-to-date real time that somebody's paid. There are a lot of people that pay the very last hour of the month and it causes some issues with communication as far as having these bills without a late fee. Uh, be, with iCloud, we currently pay somewhere in the neighborhood of one hundred and twenty-five to two hundred dollars a month based on the usage. With BSNA payments, we will be eliminating that cost through the township, so.
Is there any charge from BSNA to implement this?
No, it's all part of our service, yeah. Well, the only charge that we have is seven hundred and fifty dollars that we've already paid and that's for two card readers. So billing department, our building department and treasurer's office will have a card reader similar to you see in a store where people will be able to take their, be able to pay with Google Pay, Apple Pay, um, their digital credit card, put it on there and the charges are on the second page there. Two point eight zero percent for property tax, two point nine five for utility billing and miscellaneous. Currently, they're paying three point two five with a credit card with iCloud. And with the utility billing, there is no, um, uh, limit. Currently with iCloud, we have a four hundred dollar limit. So people have a water bill that's more than four hundred dollars, they have to pay it twice. So that's a, you know, three point two five percent charge. Each one of them. Or I'm sorry, three ninety-five.
Who currently uses this system?
A lot of municipalities use it.
They're happy with it?
Yeah, yeah.
We all hear the people who are unhappy with the making payments.
Right.
Not getting processed.
So we're, we plan on going live with this, um, June fifth. Uh, and in the meantime, we have three different ways that we're going to communicate with our utility, well, with utility for sure. We're going to send it out in our, in our utility bill. He's also going to put a notice on, in the bill. We're going to send them out separately as well. So there'll be three different ways they're going to be communicated with. And we're going to capture everybody's email that we can currently capture because a lot of people don't like giving that information out. But with iCloud, we'll be able to get as many emails that are being provided, we're also going to send them an email, letting them know what change. So the go-live date will be Jan, June fifth. I make a motion that we convert from iCloud to BSNA payments.
I'll support that motion. Pretty quiet lately, seem to be pretty quiet. Everybody's gotten used to what we had and now you're going to switch it, so good luck with that.
Yeah.
Do anybody else have any more discussion for Frank on this? Roxanne, can we get a roll call, please?
Uh, Vincent?
Yes.
To Giorgio?
Yes.
Sokowicz?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now move on to eight H, is the ordinance code book? I don't know if you had anything on this, Susan, though.
Just, just have any questions, you can look at if you find mistakes. We, we first looked at this, uh, November twenty-two, so it's taken this long. There were so many mistakes in it to get it back. On the cover, there is a mistake. It says zoning ordinances, then it should say code of ordinances. I have a new page if you want to update it.
So what you want everybody to do is kind of take a look at it. If there's any corrections or any changes anybody wants to make, let you know and then we'll get with Joe and Gary and he'll make the changes and we can adopt this.
He had somebody working on it, so I. No, we've already done that. We did that back in twenty-two. It's just, this is an FYI.
Okay. If anybody has any changes, I'll let you know, Mike.
Yep, thank you.
Um, we need to amend ordinance eight I. Susan? Eight I is amend ordinance one sixty-one.
That's David.
Yeah, that's me. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, David, yeah.
So this ends up being just to rectify some items that were missed, that were put in the proper, improper category when this was originally adopted on June twelfth of twenty-twenty-four. It came to the planning commission's attention that some things were not in their correct uses, either special land uses or permitted land uses. And all this does is clarify everything is in the right place now where it should be.
I think it was primarily that the storage facilities were left out of it. It needed to be under special land use and was left out. It was primarily what kind of triggered this because we have a storage facility coming in in our industrial corridor, I think, so. You want to make a motion?
Sure. I make a motion to approve the amendment to ordinance one-six-one related to industrial districts to restore the original intent of the revision specifically to clarify the permitted and special land uses to the light industrial one and IRO districts, which were transposed in the prior final version of the language that was previously approved by the Board of Trustees on June twelfth, twenty-twenty-four.
Support?
Or?
What about you, Giorgio? We get a roll call, Roxanne, please?
Uh, Philbrook?
Yes.
To Giorgio?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Sokowicz?
Yes.
Motion carries, that's Dave, and then, um, the others just order right to eight J, which is our planning commission yearly goals.
Okay, so you have a copy of those. Those were prepared for and adopted by the planning commission. All my papers, I misplaced mine. It's my understanding that they do this every year. This is the first time that I have been involved in the process, so. Let's see if we have a copy right now, but if you have any questions, I would try and answer them. Thanks. I don't know where mine went, but I know it's in this pile somewhere.
Once we're done, you'll find it.
Yeah.
Um, there's no motion on this, right? This is just basically for an FYI, is that what you're saying?
I, I don't know how you normally deal with it.
Adopted and received.
We do. So I'll make a motion to accept the April first, twenty-twenty-five to March thirty, third, twenty-twenty-six fiscal year planning commission goals as presented.
Want to support Dave's?
Sorry, I didn't mean to steal your.
No, that's okay, that, that's fine.
But they haven't, yeah. A motion by Craft, supported by Vincent. Can we get a roll call, please?
Sokowicz?
Yes.
To Giorgio?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Move on item eight K, the master plan survey. Dave, you got a roll?
Okay. So at our, we have been working on the master plan for several months and it was decided that we would survey, allow the community to have input in the master plan through the use of a survey. So the survey has been developed. Joe has taken care of that. The, as Joe presented it to us, the hope was that the survey would open on May first and close on May thirty-first. And then as we got to looking at that, it was like we needed to do some things right away and to get a broader, um, you know, outreach for the survey. We had talked about the things that you see on the paper that came, tier one, tier two and tier three, um, outreaches. So basically, the only cost would be in tier one for a newspaper announcement. That's around two fifty to three hundred dollars. And then if we did a mailing, a postcard size mailing to every residence, not every person, but each individual residence in the township, it would cost between twenty-one eighty-three and twenty-four seventy-five. I think that number is a little high. The number that Frank provided from the organization that normally does.
KCF.
Had a total of four thousand. So when Joe looked it up, he said we were right around three thousand residences in the township.
We mail out thirty-nine, forty-seven tax bills every year.
That, okay, so that's to each house.
Correct.
Each property. Each property.
And business, right.
Okay, so we don't want to mail them, well, I guess we could mail them to just property, to property owners. They might not live in the township, but they would own property. So that makes sense. That makes sense. So it would be, if you add those two together, it would be basically somewhere around twenty-four, twenty-five hundred to twenty-seven or twenty-eight hundred dollars. So I, we obviously don't have the funds to do that in the planning commission budget and I would make a motion to. Add here as well. I would just make a motion to allocate not more than three thousand dollars to master plan survey notification in the township.
Should see where it's coming from.
Not to exceed three thousand?
Not to exceed three thousand dollars.
Where would that come out of the budget?
I, I have no idea.
I wonder if we have.
We have mailing and planning and zoning. I mean, I'm, I'm going to look right now, but.
I see legal notice and publications, fifteen hundred dollars currently under planning and zoning on page six.
Yeah, I see it.
Seventeen.
Is it? Under planning commission, let's play another line item. I don't have anything for mailing.
These things are done and knows we should specify where it's coming from.
I don't know, we could put on a contracted services, since Giffords is doing a survey.
Yeah, there's sixteen thousand under there.
Under what did you say?
Contracted services under planning commission.
So there's sixteen thousand in there because we have that budgeted because of the master plan that they're redoing and we do have to pay Giffords on a monthly basis. That's why we're over eleven thousand dollars. See that?
Yeah.
But we paid most of that's been paid to Giffords now, so we're going to have an access in our fund balance time now, website maintenance, planning. Did you get a second, Dave, on your motion?
I think so.
A second.
Second by Frank. Um, if there's no other discussion, can we get a roll call?
Philbrook?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Sokowicz?
Yes.
To Giorgio?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
My motion carries, thanks Dave, for all you guys are doing on there. So on this, what's nice is this, this goes out to every resident, so everybody resident will have the opportunity. It's not like we're trying to do the master plan without them knowing about it. We're trying to contact them. Must have gone on our website, any other ways, newspaper, you said, right?
Newspaper.
Newspaper. And it'll go on the Giffords and Webster website as well. So the postcard that goes out should have two QR codes on it. They can take it at either site. Everything will be combined. It would be good, we had talked about it, the township had paper copies as well available.
You're going to put them out by prax and rec, it looks like?
Yes.
You're going to order like three hundred more extra?
The cars.
You can put in, like businesses around?
Yeah, that would, that's what we had talked about.
Good.
Okay. Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome.
Thanks, everybody on the PC. I'll move on to, um, item eight L, Lombardo rezoning. This is just something we already approved. We just have to approve it again so we can get it. What do you call it in the paper?
Notice, no, he's got the personal taped out.
Susan provided me with the motion from last time, so I'll just reread this.
Easy reading version.
Oh, okay.
That works for you?
Sure. Yeah, okay.
You, I'm, I'm happy to let you read it.
No, you can.
Okay. So I make a motion to reprove, to approve the Lombardo zoning request dated January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Do we have to update the date? Do I have to make it today?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, or just to approve the rezoning? Well, that's when it was dated.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that's when it was.
That's when his application was dated.
Okay, all right. So it's not the approval, sorry.
Right, okay, so dated January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five, which includes parcel numbers one-four, zero-one, three-five, one-zero-one, zero-one-one, zero-two-three, zero-two-five, zero-two-eight, zero-two-nine, zero-three-five, zero-five-one. Currently, the parcels total twenty-three point one-nine acres with eleven point nine being zoned C-one or C-two and the balance R-one-B. The site would have five point four-eight-six acres of C-two zoning and sixteen point one-zero-three of R-one-B and then an additional one point six-zero-one R-one-B parcel subject to the same conditions. The conditions are as follows. Development is consistent with the depiction submitted January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five, a maximum of twenty-eight home sites, no vehicle access to Mellon Street, a landscape berm between the C-two and residential developments to be built during the development, a minimum of twenty-two foot by twenty-two foot side entrance garages, brick on four sides of the first floor, twenty-two hundred square foot minimum ranches, twenty-seven hundred and fifty square foot minimum colonials. The property shall be allowed to use a thirty-foot private right-of-way for the internal road in lieu of a sixty-foot public right-of-way. The road width and pavement cross-sections shall be consistent with the Macomb County Road Commission requirements and the building on the C-two lot will be rehabbed or removed within twenty-four months.
I'll support. There's no other discussion. Can we get a roll call?
Vincent?
Yes.
Sokowicz?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
To Giorgio?
Yes.
Roxanne, it's the same ordinance in your minutes and for the February meeting, so you'll have it all right there.
For clarification, my motion on payments includes taxes and utility, right?
For BSNA?
For BSNA payment? It's not just utility, it's both tax and utility.
I don't, you didn't say that. You just said that we were just.
Yeah, so I need to clarify that.
Amend.
Yeah, so I want to amend my motion that the BSNA payments will include both utility and tax payments for July first of twenty-five.
Did you say July first or did you say?
June first will be the go-live date for utility payments, but then July first, we mail out the twenty-six tax bills, or the twenty-five tax bills, summer tax bills, so then they'll be able to pay with it then as well with the new system.
We have to do another roll call?
Yeah, I think.
Another roll call? So, okay, so you amended your motion.
I amended my motion to, so beginning June, June fifth, we will be accepting payments through BSNA payments, both for utility and tax.
And then Mike second?
I'll second, second.
So we'll take a vote on the, on the revised motion?
Yeah.
Okay, Craft?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
To Giorgio?
Yes.
Sokowicz?
Yes.
Yes.
Again, good luck on that, Frank.
Thanks.
So that's end of our agenda. If anybody else has anything else for us to discuss, we can do communications from the board chief, Mr. Self.
Run volume for the month, one hundred and seventy-eight calls, one hundred and twenty-two in Bruce Township, six in Romeo.
Hey, Dave, things coming up at all? In days, open house?
Well, open house in October, but.
Dave, what do you got?
Nothing.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We're done?
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to let everybody know that we're working on the website. Hopefully it'll launch by the end of the month. Um, the techni, it's with the technical team now and, um, they're, they're going to and they're, they're going to try and do the content migration by the end of the day tomorrow. I'm going to send the link to all the departments so you can, it lists names and lists a lot of things. But I'm going to send it to each department so you can see if there's something you want added. I'll send it to trustees, too, if you have anything you want to add or change.
Make sure she gets it.
Yeah, this guy's own website.
You got your own website?
We do. You know, we do.
I'm kidding.
But there's, there should be a link.
Yeah.
Pretty sure there's a link.
I also wanted to let you know that with the Michigan Civil Rights Commission complaint that we have, I got a call from the investigator last week. I guess he's making calls, so just wanted to give you a heads up. Tell him to talk to our attorney. Seabird has been appointed as our attorney by the insurance company.
Have you heard anything maybe about an election coming up in the fall for the school board?
I have heard that.
No, nothing, nothing new right yet?
No. But I heard it was not till November, so.
November.
Which surprises me, but.
Okay.
Does what, it doesn't fail. Usually, they do it in August and then come back.
I just, Happy Easter, everybody. Have a great holiday. I don't really have much else.
Just want to wish everyone a Happy Easter.
Marty?
I talked to Susan today about possibly having Therese come next meeting for the library just to kind of talk about their addition and possible funding. There was something on Facebook where they might lose some funding, so maybe have her give us a little presentation.
But did you see the response that she gave? I sent you the.
No, no, I didn't see. Oh, it was from Claire?
Yes, she can't do it by their bylaws. So she, it has to be Claire, because if they go around speaking on behalf of.
So Therese cannot come, and it has to be Claire.
Correct, yeah.
You reached out to her?
I did not. I, I.
I'm sorry. I didn't see that, Susan. I apologize.
Roxanne, you have anything?
I don't.
All right. Well, thank everybody for coming out. Appreciate everybody at home. Riley, thanks for everything back there. Appreciate it. And we have a good night and good holiday.